Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Pearl?
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling, here. Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bun.
Here.
All right. Item four, public participation. This is the two-minute opportunity. Any member of the public that's here that wishes to address the board can do so. If you're on the agenda, you don't have to speak now. All right. Hearing none, we'll move on. We have five items on consent this evening. I will read these and entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the village board meeting of June 13th. Accounts payable through June 23rd. Temporary liquor license for Earthmover Credit Union. Ordinance 1726. This is amending the village code regarding amusement devices and billiard parlors. Second reading. And ordinance 1728, adopting the 2016 prevailing wage rate. Waiver first, passage on the second.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bun.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yeah.
Trustee Hines.
I carry six zero. Thank you. All right. Under items for separate action this evening, we have Resolution 2016-004, authorizing the creation of a new stationary food vendor license for Pigs in Heat BBQ at 1550 Douglas Road. This is in front of Home Pantry and Liquor. That? Is there somebody on staff that wants to give a summary of the item?
By village ordinance, it's required that any new stationary food vendor on a temporary basis must be approved by the village board. I believe that Village Attorney Anderson could expand upon it, but it's pretty much just that simple. With Health Department approval and obviously the knowledge of the property owner, we need to get village board approval for any additional stationary food vendor. We already have one in the village, and this would be the second.
And this is, for your reference, similar to how we do liquor licenses in the village, where you cap the number, and then when someone wants to come and have a new one, the approval actually has to come from the board, unlike where you might leave it wide open and anybody can get one. This gives you a little bit more control over what's coming into the village. Happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
The owner of Home Pantry, I can't remember his name right now, he's okay with this being in front of his store?
Yes.
And the term stationary? This is like a food cart, food truck type?
Essentially, yes.
So it's really not stationary? It's not?
It's temporary stationary.
Temporary stationary, okay.
It's currently parked. They're not driving.
The applicants are in the audience tonight, if you wish to ask them any questions, but...
Is it gonna move, or is it there overnight? Is it gonna stay there all the time? You're gonna drive it home every night?
No, we do a lot of, uh... Picnics and that.
If you can state your name and sign in as well. State your name.
My name's Morris. I'm the owner of Pigs in Heat BBQ. I do a lot of competition barbecue, and we move quite a bit. Most of the time during the week, we are, we'll be in that location, but some weekends we're out at competitions and different festivals and things like that, so...
Okay.
Do you have an idea of the hours you'll have at this location?
Yes, ma'am. Monday through Friday, if we're not in competition, from 12 to 9. Normally, we try to leave before the liquor store closes.
Okay.
With decent hours, so that we're in and we're out of there.
Okay. Thank you.
How about sales tax? How do you treat that?
Well, my sales tax?
Yeah. If you're in different places?
Well, what we do is we keep a system on our register in the truck, and we've registered with the state on the sales that we do, and we keep a list of the sales that we do here in Montgomery, so that whatever sales we do here, whatever taxes we owe, that we have it on record.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board on this?
No, sir.
Okay.
I wouldn't say welcome. I look forward to trying your product.
Second.
Was that a motion, actually?
It was. I was taking that as a motion.
Sure, I'll take a motion, yes.
Motion to approve. Second. Any more discussion on the item? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Bun.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Hines.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
All right. I carry six zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all so much.
When will you be opening?
I'm gonna be over here, maybe tomorrow, since you passed it.
Yeah.
I'm a little hungry now.
Thanks. All right. Moving on, we have item B. Ordinance 1729, amending the village code to create a Class G liquor license for Lucky's Beef and Dogs. This is waiver first, passage on the second. That I'll ask Deputy Chief Armando Sanders for a summary.
For, uh, this is for James.
Yes.
Yeah, they're here if there were any questions on that. They gave their presentation at an earlier board meeting, but I don't know if any board members had any questions for them, but they are here with all his family present.
I'm assuming the background check was fine, or you'd hear about it?
Yeah, the background check was successfully completed. We're just waiting for the fingerprints to be returned from the state. We don't have a timeframe on that, but hopefully within two to three weeks, we will get that.
And the Class G liquor license is the 50/50 split, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any more discussion? Call the roll.
When do you think you're gonna be open?
Everything is moving smoothly, looking around Thanksgiving.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, man.
No, it's fine. Any more discussion, questions? All right.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yeah.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bun.
Yes.
All right. I carry six zero. Thank you. Good luck to you. Item C this evening is a professional services agreement with EEI for Wells 14 and 15, water treatment plant chlorine feed upgrades. That, Director of Public Works, Todd Happenstead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Due to the variability of the chlorine demand in the raw and finished water coming out of Well 1415 Water Plant on the west side of town, we are proposing upgrading the chlorine feed system to continuously analyze both the raw and the finished water quality. It will automatically make some adjustments within the set parameters to inject chlorine at variable rates, depending on the demand, obviously, determined by those analyzers. This will make for more consistent water going out into the system. Therefore, I'm recommending the approval of PSA with Engineering Enterprises and the amount of $27,000 to provide the design for the system, EPA permitting, bidding, contracting, and construction oversight services. If there's any questions, I'm happy to respond to those.
This is just for the paperwork and type? This doesn't include the system?
Correct.
The system will be a separate?
Yes, this is the engineering components associated with those advancements.
Do you have any idea what the, without designing it, I'm sure you...
Yeah, this is actually probably a much more affordable option compared to what we had originally budgeted for. There was originally about $700,000 budgeted for chlorine advancements at all three facilities. We've taken a refined look at that and determined that we can go a different route and save substantial money, hopefully getting to the same end goal.
So looking at...
I don't have that figure off the top of my head, and I apologize.
And looking at the schedule that's in there, are you still thinking October of this year to move forward?
I think that's fairly realistic.
Okay. All right. If there are no other questions, entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bun.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yeah.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay. I carry six zero. Thank you. Moving on to item D, we have the pavement management study update, and I believe Pete Wallace has a PowerPoint.
So, this is the PowerPoint that we're gonna...
Okay. Does this mean you're no longer showing a PowerPoint?
Well, we blew a, apparently we blew a bulb in the projector, so we're unable to do PowerPoint tonight, so I apologize.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Probably a blessing.
I'm a printer. I love to see the paper.
Okay. This is what we did 2000. So, I think this is gonna be our plan, because this will be an annual, uh, annual process where we come forward, and what we want to do is basically update the program from the pavement management study that was developed for a five-year plan. Each year, we'll come back and we'll modify the program based on what we were able to accomplish the year before and what the funding is actually at. So, one of the things you'll notice in the presentation, if you go in a couple of sheets, sadly, making copies, the first page shows the, what was in the original 2017 plan from the report, and then the additional streets that we can add. Basically, we're able to add about 3.5 miles of roadways, I think. And so, what we did is we took our pavement management software, we aged the entire system by a year, and then reran it, and, but because we had better tax revenue than we expected, we had savings because we didn't use as much salt in the last summer, and the price of salt dropped, and then just some economies of our bidding has really opened up things a little bit. So, we're able to add those streets that are shown, and what we're hoping to do this evening would be to get your approval that, that that's acceptable, and we'll move forward on that basis. And I would ask that the staff has some flexibility, because as you may recall, this is based on our, what would you say, the general concept level estimates of all the streets. When we get out and actually do the engineering, we measure each street, there's usually changes in what needs to happen. The other thing that we usually find is there are elements that, for example, like this year, we had to replace more catch basins than we expected. We put in a lot more sidewalk than we expected. There's things like that. But we believe that we can achieve this program, and what our plan would be is we would come back and just give you an update as things develop as to what we're gonna actually bid. We're also combining our sales tax funds, which we generally refer to as an IRP, the Infrastructure Road Program, to just to separate it from MFT. So, we're gonna take MFT and our sales tax funds together, so that we have the, a larger program, so we get economies of scale. Now, there is one other caveat, the state budget, there's potential for MFT payments to be withheld. If that happens, then we would have to make an adjustment to the program. But again, we would do that before we bid it out, but we would move forward, trying to do as much as we could, and then we'll adjust, you know, as things go forward. And we have a general schedule in the packet as well. If this is acceptable to everyone tonight, we'd like approval generally. We'd come back in July with our engineering professional services agreement to do the work. We'd do the design from August to December, bid it in January, which is what we did this year, and it worked out really well, and then we'd award in February, and then our construction would be from April till August of next year. So, that's the overview, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Sorry for the lack of the PowerPoint, but...
This is a new, this early bidding, that's something that we've changed and we're doing now, right?
Yeah, and that's a huge benefit to us. It really reflects the bid prices, and so, that's, I think, probably one of the strongest parts of the plan, was to get out ahead of things and, you know, go ahead of the, if you wait for, you know, a May 1st budget, I mean, you're just so far behind on, on bidding. It's just, you know, we're really at a disadvantage. So, this has really been a benefit to be able to get out ahead of things.
Thank you to staff for being proactive on that and making sure that we can take advantage of that. So, you know, it's a team effort, so thank you.
So, these added streets are pretty much a direct result of the residents passing the sales tax referendum?
Yeah, that's the big part of it, for sure, and then it's a combination of some other factors, like we said, just, you know, early bidding, less use of MFT monies for other things, so, but, and we're getting more, we're generating more revenue than we expected as well, so that's a good thing.
I think we've been a lot more efficient the last year or two, which I appreciate, I think, all of us do, and in places like Sherman, I think Pete and I both know that Sherman, we get residents there griping already, and it's, that street really fell apart quick. And it's, and I told Theresa, I said, "This is like Pete and I had in 2001. We did, we didn't have a projector either. We did this. This is fine."
You know, we do get inquiries from time to time, you know, "When is my street gonna be done?" And even with our additional funding, we're still, at any one time, we're only doing about 20%, you know, of the streets. So, there's gonna be people that aren't gonna, we can't get to everybody's street in a five-year period, is, I guess, my point. We're trying to do as much as we can, as fast as we can, but there are just gonna be some times when we won't be able to get to certain streets. But we did have some inquiries this year, and we tried to accommodate the ones that we thought fit in, and we still try to use the computer to help manage our costs, to make sure we're doing things as efficiently as possible, and then we still try to also, you know, put things in geographic locations, try to maximize our, minimize the mobilization cost, if you will, and try to get that working as well.
This is about a 68% increase over what was scheduled, so it's significant.
Pete, there's an asterisk by Alcott Road, and...
Yeah, Alcott's gonna be funded with ALFO, so that's federally funded, and there's no guarantee that we'll actually, for sure, get that. It was a B-listed project, so we're hoping we'll get funding for it this year. If we don't, then it possibly will be next year, but that's the reason we, you know, it's kinda like what happened with Briar Cliff. We'll have, we'll try to bid them in the same general timeframe, but the ALFOs are actually managed by the state and actually bid by the state on behalf of the village, and if they shut down, then that one won't happen either.
Okay. And I think it's appropriate to give staff that flexibility on the design, to design what you can, and if we don't have funding for every single part of this, then to make those adjustments as we need to this fall.
Until we do the design, we won't be able to make that determination, so we really need to get into it and find out, so...
Yep. All right. Thanks for the good news. Any other comments, questions, motions?
Need a motion to approve, motion to approve pavement program?
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bun.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yeah.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
I carry six zero. Thank you, Pete. All right. Moving on, items for discussion. Liquor license request for Pig Dog Pub. I see the Olivers are here this evening, so I will kick it over to Deputy Chief for an intro, and then I believe they have something to say as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to Harold and Rebecca Oliver. They're the owners of the new Pig Dog Pub, 1250 South Broadway, which was the old Elmers. In your packets is a letter from Mason Oliver, the owner's son, explaining their business plan. Mason was unable to attend this evening due to his son being in a championship baseball game, and we just found out they won. So, I think that's a good sign of things to come. Mason's background has been successfully completed, and his fingerprints have also been submitted, so we're awaiting those results, hopefully within two to three weeks. At this time, I'd like to have the Olivers come up and talk about their business plan.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to thank President Broly, trustees, and staff for letting us present in front of you for a few minutes. Some of you might know us, and some of you might not. My husband and I grew up in Aurora. We're Aurora kids, East Aurora kids, and so Montgomery was always on our radar and part of what we called home. It's, we're happy to be back in the area. We're very excited about Pig Dog. I'm sad, because we had a PowerPoint on a thumb drive and no paper. So, we don't have a presentation for you, but we would be happy to provide you with anything, or I can bring it by tomorrow. We can run it off in hard copy. But one of the things that we wanted to share with you, that we thought you would really enjoy, is you can never lose with dogs, babies, and cat videos, and so, I'm sure some of you are wondering, how on earth did we come up with Pig Dog Pub? And we had a picture of the original Pig Dog, which was Mason, our son's first dog, when he became an adult, and she was an English Bulldog, and because of her snoring and snorting and pig-like noises that could never leave her life, she became nicknamed the Pig Dog. And she was adored by all of us. She was our grand puppy, and sadly, we lost her. She was almost 12. We just lost her in December. So, when we were trying to figure out, you know, what do we want to call this establishment? Because it needs to be family-friendly, it needs to make people smile, it needs to make people wonder, "How did they get Pig Dog Pub?", and not fearful to stop in our doors and to cross our threshold. And so, Mason called me one day, he said, "Mom, I think I've got it." And he said, "Let's call it Pig Dog Pub." And we loved it, and we think eventually everyone, once they realize why it's called that, because we will have a photo of the original Pig Dog inside our doors, people will really enjoy that. And she was born on April 1st, April Fool's Day, which is appropriate, and so, the plan is on every April 1st, it will be Pig Dog Day, and it will be a type of grand opening or a celebratory day, where people can bring their dogs, we'll have photographers, we'll have donations to some type of community charity or fund that needs support, and we will donate proceeds and things of that nature, because that's the kind of thing that the Olivers and our family likes to do in a community, and I think that most of you know that. We, it is a full-service, as I said, family-friendly place. We want a pub-like atmosphere, because it needs to be neighborhood, it needs to feel welcoming, it needs to be the place that everybody says, "I don't wanna cook, let's go over to Pig Dog." And that's exactly how we have put it together and designed it to be. I know you have a letter in your file or your board packet this evening, and I wanted to just speak to the family portion of it, some of the aspects that way, and then I'm gonna turn the mic over to the man, and here's my husband, Harold.
I guess I'm really here for questions, because it's gonna be a very simple operation. It's gonna be a family restaurant, mostly food. I know that's usually the question when we come into the communities. It's not a bar, it's not a tavern, it's nothing like that. Obviously, we have, we're asking for a liquor license, because it's necessary in today's economy, it's very important that you have liquor with, with food, but it's gonna be a family-friendly place. That's what we're looking for. We're not looking to stay up, we don't want a late liquor license, we're not looking for anything like that. We have, if you're familiar with us, we go Mason Square, which Mason, this Mason is the original Mason from Mason Square, when we built that in the 90s. It's gonna be pretty close to Scoreboards, if you've been to Scoreboards. We also had one, 12 Handles in Crest Hill, we had Twofer's in Manuka. These are all somewhat sports bars. This is more like a pub. It's gonna be, we're not gonna call it a sports bar, but there's gonna be 25 TVs in there, so there'll be games going all the time. So, it's, we like the name Pig Dog Pub rather than the sports bar. It's a little different, we think, try to hit the whole community rather than just sports. We also have Millhurst Dale House, if you're familiar with that, in Yorkville. We have that. All the Southern Bell Restaurants, Giucio Restaurants, Miller's Char House, we're part of Halsted Street Deli. We're, we're involved with quite a few restaurants right now, so it's not new to, not new to us. We're, it's not our first venture. So, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
When are you expecting to open?
That's the number one question, right there.
Absolutely.
We, we had, we opened a restaurant in Barrington, and we're working on one in Carpenter'sville. We had other ones that jumped ahead of this. This sort of fell, we worked on this for two years to try to purchase this property, because it's where we grew up, so it was sort of a neighborhood, it was important to us, so it was, we thought this was gonna be a good one for the family. So, we got behind a little bit. We're probably gonna be open in the next 60 to 90 days, we're looking for. I might say Mike Hoopar and Montgomery is phenomenal, so I guess when we say this, you're gonna vote for a raise for him tonight. But Montgomery to work with, we used to have our office right over here, we had Oliver Structures, several businesses. In fact, President Broly, when he was a very young man, did some design with an engineering firm. So, we've been around for quite a while. Montgomery, today, is a pleasure to work with on the process. I'm not gonna go with the media to say what it used to be like, but right now, it's, it's a pleasure. Mike has been very, very helpful, Tom with the fire department, very helpful, Mr. Young, very helpful, to try to help us get this off, off the ground. Before we purchased it, we met with Montgomery to make sure you wanted us, to make sure this was gonna be feasible, and it was with open arms. And, you know, when you're doing a night, when you're building, repairing a 1948 building, built in 1948, there's a lot of unforeseen conditions, a lot of unforeseen conditions. Walls falling out, roofs falling, so we've done quite a bit of work on this, a little more than we expected, but it's gonna be nice. It's gonna be very nice. So, to answer your question, probably be open end of August, maybe, first September. We're gonna do a very soft opening, we're not gonna announce it. We have to train our staff, as always, usually put an open sign, and we get crushed, but we try not to do that. We try to do a soft opening, then have a grand opening. But we wanna be part of the community, we wanna sponsor your Little League teams, like we do in all of the communities, we wanna be part of the community. The economic development, which we've had a good relationship, she does a phenomenal job also, by the way. We wanna be part of the community, so we look forward to it.
Let me say too, Harold, that...
Pardon me?
Let me say this, that you were one of our first $5,000 contribution to the MEDC, and you were for many years until the economy changed, but we appreciate you being back in town, you were very good on Lake Street, and we're sure you're gonna be good here too, and I kept saying you should let, if you remember, I kept saying, "Let Mason go", 'cause he's a lot smarter than, than you're holding him back, 'cause he really, he's a good, really smart, you know, he's not a kid anymore, but he really was.
And as we said, Mason, we're very proud of Mason, he's got three, three beautiful grand, we have three beautiful grandchildren, and the oldest just became a champion tonight in the Little League, so that was fun. We were there before we came here, so you almost didn't see us, 'cause it was, it wouldn't have been such a high score. Any other questions?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good to see you guys.
Thank you.
And you can see from the letter in the packet, too, they are requesting a Class G, which we discussed earlier, the 50/50 split, so. At this point, looking for the typical three choices that the chief gives us is, "I need more information," "Proceed," and "We're not interested," so...
Right. So, at this point, we're looking for direction for approval for the Class G at the July 11 Board meeting.
There you go.
I'd say proceed.
Yeah.
Not hearing any opposition to that, so...
No.
Great.
Move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any new or unfinished business to come before the board?
I have an item. Just checking back, did the watershed or the water delivery system out in front of, is that working?
Yes, quite well, actually.
Did we ever find out who was stealing water from us?
Well, as, as with any suspected theft situation, unless you have hardcore proof, it's hard to determine. We have fewer trucks lining up now that it's enforced to be an honest system, and we've had a few occurrences where a truck has pulled up and made attempts and unsuccessfully to obtain water. So, I can't say with certainty that we've determined who or if there was theft, but I do suspect that we've reduced the amount of unaccounted for usage, if you will.
Very good. That hydrant is the only hydrant that contractors or people should be getting water from?
There are a few exceptions made, depending on the type of project. For example, Geneva Construction, who's been working for the village, it's in our best interest to extend them use of hydrants throughout the system, and there's other similar types of projects, but very few and far between, and all of those should be approved by Public Works before utilized.
Does Geneva have a meter?
Yes.
Have we taken possession, a repossession of a lot of our outstanding meters?
We took possession of all of our outstanding meters. We declared numerous meters surplus based on their usage and condition. The ones that were determined to still be potentially viable were sent for accuracy testing. I think we sent nine of them, and eight of them came back as being reasonably accurate, so we've maintained those. We then discarded the, the ninth one, and those are the meters that we use for, for these contractors that are given permission.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
All right, anything else?
Yes. On the Briar Cliff project, I just wanted to say, I noticed we have some additional crosswalks on Briar Cliff that were not there before, so that's a welcome addition to see that, so. That's all.
One final question. Do we have further word on the Webster Street grade crossing?
I always cautiously give this information, because I have no influence on when it happens. The latest word is that they will begin construction on the morning of Tuesday, July 5th, and they tell us they will be completed by the end of business on July 9th. I believe that to be a fairly aggressive schedule, so I don't know if that's reasonable or not, but we'll take what we can get. I'll be sending a letter out to the neighboring businesses and an email to the agencies that we know utilize that crossing, giving that very information to help them plan better. That should go out tomorrow.
That's interesting. Their timeline that they discussed last year, wasn't it two weeks, or a week, or more than that?
Correct.
It was longer than that?
Yeah, when they initially mobilized to do this job last November, and it was canceled based on early winter setting in, I think we were on a two-week timeframe.
This will be done before Montgomery fast?
I, I would like to say with certainty that that is the case. Again, I, we don't really have a whole lot of influence in this, in this program, unfortunately. The railroad operates as their own.
I like that answer better.
I, I hope that it will be done, yes.
The other item, I was, I forgot to mention until Trustee Ben said that. I crossed over there today, and I thought they were working on it. I was so excited, because I saw action on that crossing, and I came back through about two hours later. Every bone was gone, and it was still in the same condition. I was like, oh. So, perhaps they're doing some kind of prep work. It, it was, it was a good sign, somebody was working on something.
Maybe we can, maybe you should call them and remind them that it's no longer winter.
I've tried repeatedly.
Weekly.
Repeatedly.
Almost weekly, I would say. He's called or emailed somebody. I've been copied on the emails, and then, yeah, so, we'll see how it goes.
I wanted to just formally thank EEI for their support, and Todd and staff, Public Works, Debbie, everybody with the Sunday in the Park event that went yesterday. There was a lot of ice cream served. We, I think Stan and I were just talking, it was almost 30 gallons of ice cream that we gave out, and it was just, it was great turnout. People loved the bands, people really liked Tony's Tacos, really liked them. But yeah, it was great, just everybody came out and hung out in the park. Other than being a little warm, it was, as you can see, my wife informed me when I got home that she had the sunscreen in the bag. She just didn't offer me any, so. But no, thank you very much to EEI for the support on that event, and, and Public Works for working so diligently to coordinate, and Fox Valley Park District for bringing the trailer out, and they were there handing stuff out, and everybody that came by.
Awesome.
I know it's early, but the Packers are getting ready. I'm just, in case somebody wants to go up and take a look at them, and contrary to rumors, I think Matthews and Peppers are okay. John, John and I both think they're all right, so we'll have to-
I, I was actually waiting for this, and I just wanna remind Trustee Lee that my Ohio State Buckeyes have won a national championship. My Cleveland Cavaliers just won a national championship. My Cleveland Indians are on their way, and you, your team has done nothing, so, just to kinda let you know.
All right. Thank you for all that very important information. Moving on, we have future meetings. The next village board meeting will be July 11th at 7:00 PM. Have a good fourth, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Ben?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yep. And we're adjourned. Thank you.